Oh, it is. I was like, well, okay. So, item 11D, if you have an agenda that was posted, we have revised item 11D. And we are getting some information from M-TAS so that we can move forward and see if there's a possibility of coordinating an election that will be in March 5th so that we will save our taxpayers the $25,000 to $40,000 that we need to pay for a special election if that were to have to happen. So with our city attorney, Mr. Carter is reaching out to M-TAS to find out about that. And we will put that back on the agenda at the next meeting. We just want to be good stewards of our city's money. And we want to just see how that's going to play out as far as a timeline. So we will be adding that back on, but it will be for the next meeting. Mr. Carter, is that what you see?
Yes, I have a call into M-TAS. And I have also looking at a calendar for a while this afternoon. So I have a better idea of how the timeframes. But I'll send a, I'll follow up with you all about that after I talk to M-TAS.
Okay. And also, we, it's kind of, depending on when we do it, it's falling on holidays coming up. So we're just trying to get that timed properly and also be good stewards of our city's money. So you will, if you do have an agenda that you printed on your own, you will see that item D, that information has been removed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 5 passes 4-0. Item number 6 is citizens' comments.
None tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 7 is public announcements, awards, and recognition, city events. Mr. Ross?
Good evening. On Saturday, September 23rd, we're going to be having our Nature Fest at Bowie Nature Park. It's going to be from 9:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. All of our vendor slots are currently full. We have approximately 73 or 74 vendors along with live exhibits, live music. It's going to be a fun day for everyone to come on out. And then on Saturday, October 21st, we have our trunk retreat. That's going to be from 3:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. with a movie in the park to follow at Bowie Nature Park. If anyone, if any business organization or churches would like to be involved in the trunk retreat, it's a free event for you to come and set up for the trunk retreat. We're expecting a large turnout for that event. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
I do want to say that Richard and our city staff worked very hard on the July 3rd celebration. And there was a vote of best city event. And the 3rd of July celebration took first for Main Street Media. And so we want to congratulate our city and Richard for such a great event that won. Item number 8, staff comments and monthly reports. A community service report. Mr. Greer?
Our community service report, Public Works is continuing to perform their chipper services. They've been working on the landscaping around the health center. And they have been in the process of repairing several street issues. Our codes department issued 13 residential building permits over the last month, two grading and site utilization and reclamation permits, one demolition permit, three accessory structure permits, three sign permits, two temporary structure permits, and one non-residential renovation permit. Our codes department also completed 182 construction building inspections. We investigated six code violation complaints. And we conducted two pre-construction meetings with board in place located over on Crowcut Road and Richville Phase 4 over off of Cox Pike. And next week, on Tuesday night, we have our planning commission meeting. We will have a work session at 6:00 p.m. prior to the 7:00 p.m. regular meeting. And we have two rezoning projects on the agenda.
Thank you. Item 8B is finance. Mr. Darty?
Thank you, Mayor, Board. I'm going to combine city manager and financial report to kind of go hand in hand. We finished up the majority of audit work last week. Everything went very well. They, no hiccups. I expect another good report this year. We're in good standing as far as all of our fund balances. And they were impressed with the way we're functioning financially. So that was good to hear. We, with that said, I believe I'm by 99% sure I'm going to be ready to provide an up-to-date financial report on the 21st of this month. I would like to move all staff reports to the second meeting to give everybody time to get the prior month's data ready to present. I think we could keep it, you know, short, like, kind of like, but that will give everybody, the first meeting is kind of hard to get, especially if it's early, hard to get all the data prepared for a staff report. So if it's, if it's okay with the board, we're just going to move the financial report and the community services report to, to the second meeting starting in October, if that's okay.
Sounds good.
And I guess the only, that's about all I have to report. We've been busy. And we're, it's good to be somewhat caught up from November 17th of last year. Thank you.
Anybody on the board have any questions? All right. Item number 9, consent agenda. Item 9A, minutes from August 17th, 2023, Board of Commissioners, regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 9 passes 4-0. Item 10, old business. A, rezoning Chester Road. Right now, I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this, please come forward. Scene 9, I will close the public hearing. Item 10-2, second and final reading of ordinance 2023-10, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview, Tennessee by rezoning 17.23 acres of property located on Chester Road consisting of Williamson County Tax Map 042 Parcel 142.00 from RS40 Single Family Residential to RM8 Multi-Family Residential. Property owner Kathy Linda O'Nida.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? We have people here that are representing the property, if you'd like to come forward.
Good evening. I'm here representing Elmington Capital Group along with Ben. And we're happy to answer any questions, but we're still really excited about this project and bringing townhomes to Fairview.
I'll just quickly, I'd thank y'all for willing, being willing to defer this. We had some stuff internally to work out, and I had a death in the family. So we really appreciate y'all being able to do that. That was awesome for us. So thank you.
Sorry, didn't cut it on, but I do have a question or two, if y'all got a minute here. I remember I asked last time if you had conventional sewer or sand filter system, and you said that you had conventional sewer. Do you have a commitment on how many taps at this time?
I don't know if we have the Dean Hildebrand and Kimmy Horn Associates. We're the civil engineer on the project. I don't think we have a commitment on the number of taps yet. We do have a verbal agreement with the sewer department that, for the capacity for this project, so they're working on getting the formal agreement.
How many actual condos are there?
There's 124.
124. So would you need 124 sewer taps individually?
We're still working through on the design side what those details are specifically, but they, if it is fewer than the 124, it would be sufficient for 124 townhomes.
And as I understand it, y'all do have to do a traffic study?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I believe that's all I have. If anybody else has got any questions?
Mayor, I know we'll get into the specifics at a later date if this passes, but did you have any movement on the access point, other accesses or things like that?
We've had conversations with them. Again, they are wanting us to get it rezoned before they can verbally or put it in writing, but we've had those conversations. We've also had the ability to talk to another townhome developer that does similar to what we do, so we can partner and have some variety in the architecture and the design, so it'll create a better product altogether.
Is that all? Okay.
One more.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mayor. Regardless of what the traffic study says, do y'all have any plans for improving that intersection where you're moving into the entrance to it and the exit to it?
We, we would do what our traffic study requires us to do. Like, we, I anticipate, I can't speak to what it's going to say, but I would anticipate there's going to be improvements at that intersection from doing anything on Chester Road.
Have they given you any indication of what the improvements would be at this point?
Not yet.
Okay.
But for, to us, improvements at that intersection are better for us. So we're going to do our fair share, and anything that we have to do there is going to make our development better.
Okay. One other thing, I noticed that we do have a drainage from stormwater. Would that be engineered at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 10-2 passes 4-0. Thank you, guys. Second reading. Item 11, new business. A, Resolution 54-23, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a performance agreement between Rubik's Groove and the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Richard Ross? Richard Ross?
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're already in the planning stages for July 3rd. I know that it seems like we just had July 3rd event just a few weeks ago, but enable for us to have a successful event, we have to go and start booking artists and all the background stuff now because people are already starting to book those, those artists. So our main act this, or for next year, will be Rubik's Groove, and that will be the last performance. And it would be greatly appreciated for them to be at the event for next year.
They are very popular and are getting more popular every year. So it is important for us to go ahead and get them booked early. They draw a big crowd, and it's, they're so interactive with, you know, everyone at the event. I just can't see us not having them, so that's exciting. Anyone else have any questions?
I believe you have a motion. Did you get a second?
No.
I'll second.
Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11A passes 4-0. 11B, Resolution 55-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to grant a sewer line and utility easement to Northwest Cove LLC.
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion on this?
Is there a survey that correlates with this? We didn't have a survey in our package, just an easement language. I guess the, the question would be, from my standpoint, is if they're, traditionally, we're going to run sewer, so we'd be in the right of way. And so we have plans for future road widening there. Could we, would we not survey the property, dedicate the right of way, and keep it out of easement language, and ensure that it's not going to inflict with any future road extensions or widenings, and so we don't have to move it or relocate? If that makes sense?
I don't know if I can answer the question, but I, after reviewing the draft, I requested that it be a non-exclusive easement. It was listed as an exclusive easement. But now it's not, now it is non-exclusive easement. So we can put other utilities in other things.
Just without a survey, it's, I don't know where this, by the meets and bounds description, I can't, I can't understand where it's at. And so a survey would just be good to see where it's going. And if it's in, the Water Authority Dixon, I think, is trying to stay out of putting sewer lines and easements and more in public rightaways. And so could we go ahead, if it's in the public right of way, go ahead and survey it and dedicate that right of way for our future wits on that road, if that makes sense?
The applicant here. Northwest Cove. I can't, I think what you're saying makes sense, but I can't answer the question. And so it may be appropriate to defer it and ask them to come to the meeting so they can answer, address the concern.
The easement references is survey done by Mark Cantrell, T-Square Engineering. So maybe it's already done, and if we could just see it, that would help me, I think, understand exactly where it's going.
So I believe that what I was told about this is that they wanted an easement because of the widening. They didn't want to have to move it at a future date.
That's kind of falls more into my question, too, is I think our plan is for that to be a 75-foot right of way, or 70-foot, it's a wider right of way. And so could we not go ahead and survey our parcels and dedicate that right of way for future, instead of having an easement tied to it that could convolute things later? And so if it's in that right of way space right now, the future right of way space for the widening, the road widening plan, could we not capture that?
Do we know any more about information about this, if there's some time restraint or anything on it? Ethan, do you have any idea?
I do not.
Were you supplied the reference survey?
I was not.
So whose project is this?
I believe this is Belvoir. Tony Cavender's.
Tony Cavender, Northwest Cove. So, I mean, typically applicants come when they're requesting the city to do something so they can answer questions like this. I was supplied with the legal document only and made modifications to legal document. But, you know, I don't know anything about the survey. I don't know anything about this road or where exactly it falls. And I think Mr. or Commissioner Butler raises some good questions, but it seems like there's no one here that can answer the question. And really, it's probably the applicant that needs to get that information to Mr. Greer so he can advise the board correctly. Or if the applicant is engineer, T-Square is here, they can explain why or why not. But as it sits, I think we're missing some information, maybe that, that might be needed for some of you to make a decision.
Do you stand with your motion? Or do you? I just, I'm not sure why T-Square is not here representing to be able to answer questions. So I think that's appropriate. And I withdraw my second.
I'll move to defer.
Second.
Okay, so we, um... Yeah, to the next, to the next meeting, and, deferral to the next meeting. And I guess we need to contact T-Square and make sure that they're here at the next meeting.
By next meeting, do you mean the next BOC, the next scheduled BOC meeting?
Scheduled BOC meeting.
What day? 21st. So that's, for the purposes of the record, that's the 21st of October.
Yes.
Also have the survey in the packet.
Okay, so the motion is to defer this to September 21st. September 21st, and we will, the applicant needs to, we should be provided with a survey, survey, and the applicant needs to have their engineer here so that we can ask questions.
Mayor, just to note, so when a, when a new property is platted in Fairview, we typically will require them to go ahead and dedicate the right of way for our future road area. And so if it's been surveyed, us going ahead and plating it may take care of the space they need. It may be in that right of way, and we wouldn't have to grant an additional easement, if that makes sense.
Yes. Okay. Anything else? Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B, 4-0 for deferment. Item 11C, Resolution 56-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, creating a water and sewer task force. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. In studying this packet right here, several days, several times up here looking at minutes, I have found that in the contract, we already have a committee set up that hasn't been utilized through the years. And I've talked to the city attorney, and he's asked if we probably defer this tonight to give him a chance to go through the contract and give me advice at that time on the next meeting. I would like to say that with everything that's going on with the Water, the Water Authority of Dixon, I still think that it's pertinent that we have some representatives there to sort of see what happens in the future with their, what they plan on doing, whether they're going to improve Jones Creek. I know they're going to probably appeal their decision that they had from TDAC. But I think that we still need some representation there regardless, so that we will know where we stand as a, as a city within their district of our future. So, but right now, I'm asking for deferral until the next meeting. Does that give you plenty of time, Mr. Carter?
Contract's pretty thick.
It is pretty thick. I haven't, I haven't covered it all, but when I find something, I, you know, I knew that I had to bring it to the attention.
No, I think that's a good thing, as long as we don't have anything else crazy happen, I should be able to look at it and let you know what I think. So that's fine.
One other thing, I did find the letter from Sandra Dudley in the minutes where they said that that particular area would, would have sewer taps rather than the sand filters, didn't state sand filter system, let me back up there. But they were saying that as long as the pipeline was extended to Jones Creek, that they would have ample sewer tap facilities. So, anyway, we'll address it more at the next meeting. Thank you for your diligence. And we just need a vote on it to defer.
Make a motion to defer.
I will make that motion to defer.
All right. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. 11C, 4-0 for deferment. Item 11D, Resolution 57-23, a resolution of accepting the resignation of Commissioner Leslie Fisher Street.
So move?
Second. Ms. Jones?
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Aye.
Item 11D passes 4-0. Item number 12, roundtable discussion, mayor and commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I want to thank Mr. Mobley, Mr. Rosenberg, and Mr. Stanley for stepping up to the plate and volunteered to hopefully be a delegate from the existing contract. Anyway, I want to thank y'all, and thank y'all for coming. I didn't know this till yesterday, late in the day, after I found it in the contract. So, but I do appreciate y'all being here. And thank you for everyone else coming and supporting us. And if we do the wrong thing, come up here and talk to us. Anyway, I want to thank all the city employees, that they do a great job, and we do appreciate them. Thank y'all so much.
Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Mayor, I'm just going to ask the staff for an update or for a future update on the request for qualifications on a zoning ordinance, if that's still out there, if it ever happened with M-TAS. And you can bring this next meeting, maybe, and just give us an update. And then, I would like to revisit the, the building permit structure for the park fee initiative that came from the Parks Master Plan. It was, it got deferred, I think, until we had a planner back. And so I'd like to revisit that discussion that we were having. And then just the, I'm throwing a lot at you guys here, but the discussion, we had started the initial discussion or review for a major thoroughfare plan. We had started studying all the roads, all the linear footage of the roads and planning for, so we could better review the major thoroughfare plan when things came to us to have a better idea of what we need, things we need to implement or control. And so could we, you know, if this board desires, is that something that we could further try and look into what it would take to completing a major thoroughfare plan? That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we were very excited last Thursday to have our second town hall meeting. From that town hall meeting, there were some issues that were brought up. One was 7114 Lake Road. Each meeting after the town hall, I will give some information about what's going on with what was brought up at the town hall. So on 7114 Lake Road, a second letter has been issued, taped to the door to make sure that they knew that it was there for compliance with cleanup. The codes department has, has gone out there and has noticed that they are starting to make efforts to clean up that property. So I know that the codes department will stay on top of that. There was a question about sign permits. We do have sign permits that we issue. Mainly, the sign permits are for extended period of time on state rightaways, like, for instance, voting, you know, when, when election signs and such. If it's on private property, then there is not a signed permit issued. If it's on private property, then there is not a sign permit issued. If there, if it is an open house or a garage sale, then they are allowed Friday night through Monday morning, Sunday night, something like that. If not, if they're left out, then they have, the codes has opportunity to remove those. And then as far as Roundtree Manor, we had a lot of discussion about the issues going on there. There are several issues. I know that probably a lot of people have seen news reports about, you know, the situation that they're in over there. Excited to say that after the city, the state got involved and Hannah McDonald with Channel Five News and Nancy Mitchell, who's an advocate for the residents, Hallmark Properties made several changes in management. And the COO reached out to Mr. Greer. And codes is staying on top of that as well, but they're making sure that the issues are all addressed and the residents are being taken care of. So that is huge. So we're excited about that. I do want to thank Todd Bradshaw. I was made aware of some graffiti on a stop sign at Cox Pike and Northwest Highway. My phone number is out everywhere, so if anybody has any issues, I welcome phone calls anytime. Someone, a resident, reached out to me. There was some graffiti on this stop sign. And all I did was call Todd. Within fifteen minutes, he had that stop sign replaced. So I want to thank him and his crew. I mean, they do an awesome job, and they're always there whenever we need them. So that, and I know that a resident reached out about some issues that... With stop signs and different things in Castleberry Farms. I do want to let that person know that I'm talking to Ethan about that. That will be addressed, and we will be taking care of that as well. We work for you. You're our community. We want to make sure that if there's anything going on, please reach out to us because if you don't reach out to us, then we don't know, you know, we may not know that something's happening. So we welcome that and want to make sure that we're taking care of our community. We have such a great staff. I appreciate every one of you. I know that Thompson working hard on the audit. And I just appreciate everything you've done with that. I know that that was, you know, very grueling. And we have the best city attorney anywhere. I can't, I cannot tell you how he's always there. I can call, and he answers the phone. It never makes me feel like, you know, I'm a waste of his time. So we have great representation. And when I say we, I mean our whole community and our codes and Richard and Rachel and everyone that's working here in our city. We, I can't tell you how things are just, you know, with our public safety, the fire department, the police department, we have the greatest just group of people right now. I've been involved in the city for over twenty years, and I've never seen it so good. And we have a great board here. So I feel like this community is well represented. As far as all the other boards and everyone serving guys out here, I really appreciate all of you. Let's, like I always say, let's keep our city beautiful and pick up trash when you see it and don't throw out. So with all that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, guys, for being here.